Go on.
Yeah. We start our meeting with the pledge of allegiance. If you please stand and say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Chair, would you like to turn the time off?
Yeah, I'm back. My computer froze. Can we get a roll call?
Yes. Chair Snow.
Chair.
Vice Chair Anderson.
Here.
Commissioner Tippett.
Here.
Commissioner Lucky.
Here.
Commissioner Erickson.
Here.
Commissioner Benson.
Here.
Commissioner Casparian is excused.
All right, next up, minutes, review and approval of minutes from the August tenth, two thousand twenty-two meeting, and I understand we have.
There was just a misspelling that I saw in Candace. Um, I'm ICE. The other Candace is ACE, Candy. Correct.
Tippett is ACE?
Yes. Candace proud.
I didn't see anything.
Can we get the minutes approved?
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Hold on, favor.
Aye.
Aye. Do we need a roll call? Yeah, we just talked about that.
I can't help you anymore. I cannot help you.
Okay, why not, in case these guys are here with that?
Uh, planning commissioners and those in attendance, there are two items on tonight's agenda um that will not be discussed tonight. The first one uh is item number three on our agenda, which deals with setbacks for garages, carports, and accessory structures in the SF one and SF two zones. Uh, that will be heard at a later date. Um, and then the other one, uh, it's been pulled at the applicant's request. That is the large-scale master plan for View seventy-eight. Uh, they've asked that that just be um not discussed, and um we'll re-advertise for that at a future date. And so if anyone's here for those two items, instead of uh waiting until the end when we would discuss those, I just thought I'd let, let everyone know.
Thank you. All right, our first item is, is that Sony? Uh, yeah, Sony.
Is it Adam?
What is it? Sony, I think. Victor Sony requests a zone change from the clean industrial zone to transit-oriented development overlay. TO-DO for properties located at two eighty and two eighty-two west, seventy-two hundred south. And who's presenting? Wendell's presenting now.
Good evening, Chairman and members of the Commission. I um wanted to report that I got one single um public comment on the zone change. Uh, just someone who called and wanted to find out what it's about. So there hasn't been much interest uh really at all in this. Um, here's the public notice and uh the vicinity map. If you've gone out there, I mean, you've, you've probably known the location. It's currently a hotel, and the parcel that's closer to the street is a restaurant. And um both of these uh parcels are currently zoned clean industrial. The clean industrial zone has a very large variety of uses. Uh, it takes the whole span from recycling center to any type of a commercial use um to restaurants, but it does not have um housing as a use. The applicant brought us this application because they would like um to change the use of the hotel and to convert it into something that resembles um multifamily housing. And if, if you want additional information, I believe the applicant is in the audience and can tell you a little more about that. Um, the materials that they provided to you and that were in the packet are pretty extensive and explain um what they plan to do. Um, tonight we are really just looking at the zone change, so we need to ask ourselves um, is this change to the um TO-DO zone something we want and something that would, you know, give the city benefit? I mean, that's really um what we are here for today. Um, and as you can see on the um slide, I tried to condense it a little bit. In, anyway, we are adding the high-density residential component. If you recommend this zone change to the city council, and there are other, you know, the heavier industrial uses that drop off. The city code has um your specific criteria and there are other systems within your local government that um are trying to sort of set the land use on a path. And um one of those is the land use plan. And the land use plan identifies um this area as an opportunity area and anticipates a change in use in, in this general area. And that change would be driven by, you know, investments that have been, that have taken place over the last, you could probably say, two to three decades. You know, there's I fifteen and um especially the track station that, you know, brings about, you know, different usage. Um, you also, you know, if you consider what the housing market has been doing in the last, um especially the last ten years, um that also is a driver um for change. And um as far as the land use plan is concerned, um this type of change would be anticipated. And with that, I put a uh recommended motion on the screen. Um, as staff, we have felt that this would be something that you should definitely entertain and could have potential upsides for the city as a whole. Do you have any questions?
I don't have any right now.
Yeah, not right now.
Thank you.
Is the applicant here?
Yeah, I see people outside.
Is it locked?
Oh.
They'd like to come in, but they can't.
Right.
Yes, this is them. We'll lock right up. Yeah, hurry up and hurry for that.
Did we lock you out?
Yeah, we didn't.
You guys just, yeah, you guys, you wanna come up and
Sure.
state your name and.
I'm Peter Coroon with TPTCB representing the owners.
And I'm John Sterrett and representing the owners.
We apologize, first of all. Fifteen-minute drive, that was forty-five minutes. If you have any questions, we're happy to answer. If you want a little more detail on the project.
Yeah, if you, if you'd like, just kind of give the planning commission a, a little brief background of what you're doing and why, and then um we'll open it up to questions, and then we'll open a public hearing after that.
So you already talked about the change in the zoning?
Yeah, Vindaline gave a, a report um that, with the staff recommendation of uh approval. And so we would just like to hear from, from you as the applicant, what your idea is for the, you know, why you're proposing what you are.
Okay, did you wanna, did you wanna do that?
Sure.
Yeah.
So, so uh we're representing the, the owner of the hotel, um the Ramada, and um his goal is to convert it into permanent housing is what he'd like to do, and prob-, most likely based on the um, the size of the units. Usually senior housing is the best option for the smaller units, so that would be uh, that's, that's his, his goal. So the current zoning unfortunately doesn't allow uh that conversion, so um in order to convert the property, we'd need to change to the TO-DO, so.
Yeah, yeah, and then I think you spoke to the general plan and the density, and so it would remain essentially the same footprint, two-story, same-room count to a great extent. The TO-DO zoning would permit twice as many units as we would need, twice as many units as are there, so we don't need anywhere near that. Um, one concern that we had talked about, which was, uh, is just the parking in the streets, and I know that you guys are concerned about that with the Moda property, and so um you've addressed that with your ordinance now that requires that the landlord not charge in excess of, you're all familiar with that. Okay, good. So then, we put that in our, it sounds like it was, so we specifically put that in our, to let you know, we know. So that won't be an issue.
And, and so in order to convert it, obviously, there has to be some work done. It's not gonna be people just living in hotel rooms. There, there will be um kitchen areas put in them as well, so dining, dining areas.
So, um, so will this be senior housing, or will it be?
Uh, um, it's, it's still TBD to, to be determined, but
Okay.
um, you know, based on the size of the units, it's the most likely use for the project.
But it could be just studio apartments.
Yeah, and so, so, and when I say senior housing, I, I don't mean like to, long-term care type of facilities, just senior dedicated housing.
And how old is the existing structure?
I think it was nineteen seventy-eight, I believe.
Okay.
Let me look that up. I, I think I have that.
Late seventies, eighties, and you can tell just by looking at it.
That's why I'm asking.
Yeah. Nineteen eighty, it says early eighties.
Just like me.
Yeah.
So we're just looking at the zoning
Right.
right now, but do you know if this is approved and they go forward with senior housing or studio? Is there any intent to improve landscaping and things like that um that exist right now?
I mean, yes is the answer. I mean, landscaping isn't horrendous, but it probably needs some sprucing up, so we're, we're working with an architect.
Okay.
And we're, we're going through this process, and then if this works, then we'll go through the next process to design it. I mean, if you'd like to see some improvements to the landscaping, I'm sure that's possible. And we do have to go through the conditional use permit anyway, so um I assume there could be some restrictions in that process.
I've noted, I mean, this property seems to have been well taken care of over the years, and, and I appreciate that, but that's one of my concerns too, is that if we're going to redevelop that area, it would be nice to have some landscaping work. Right now, it's very lacking, it seems like, in landscaping and trees and, and stuff like that, so I would love to see a little earth-friendly um environment there rather than just parking lot.
Okay, and the, and the owners are pretty amenable to
Yeah.
to things. They're not hardliners, so they're generally people who are good to work with.
Yeah. And then the other thing is, I would think the TO-DO overlay zoning would require, what we've said in our report is we'll obviously comply with whatever zoning it's, and so I would think we would have to require.
Yeah, there are, yeah, there are landscape components
That are gonna be.
that would, would be looked at and reviewed to ensure.
Yeah, so I think no matter what, you'd have to at least get up there, which is gonna be higher, and then you take it from there.
So if it's affordable housing, like our goal is, obviously, this is not for families, which should be.
That's, that's why we, we believe the senior housing makes the most sense.
You know how many units compared to parking spots?
Uh, I do, I do, but can't remember off the top of my head. I mean, I think it's pretty well parked. I think it's close to one to one.
Looks like one twenty-one. It's roughly one to one.
Cause there's parking behind that building also, right?
Right, yeah.
Parking in, and, and in the back.
So a hundred, a hundred twenty-one parking stalls.
On ninety-three units.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Anybody else have any questions?
Not at this time.
Okay.
How do we address, no, I got one. How do we address the crime issue in that space since it's pretty high crime in that area? If you look at the reports, that's a really high crime area.
Is it the area or the specific property?
And, and don't you think that if that's dedicated housing, senior housing, or even studio apartments, that's gonna cut down some of that crime because you're gonna have residents in there and not people spending a couple days?
It's not transient.
Yeah, it's not transient, so I would think that would help that situation. It kind of, as I look at the plans, it looks almost transient to me. It looks like. Well, not if it's dedicated senior housing, it's not.
Cause it wouldn't be nightly rental.
Yeah.
That would be kind of the whole.
It would be leased, yeah.
That'd be leased.
Yeah.
This, introducing a little more stability is kind of the point. The, typically, the permanent housing, you've got people invested in the community, they're shopping in the neighborhoods, they're using, you know, so.
Yeah.
And then obviously the age component as well. I think you bring people in that are maybe a little bit more stable.
Seniors are usually more well-behaved, not always.
Some not.
I think one of the um quirks about this is we're used to a hotel there, and then now we're talking about apartments, but they're small apartments, and so it, it's kind of hard to
Oh, yeah.
flip things to thinking um six-month-year lease on a small studio apartment versus, oh, it's not a hotel, it's a, you know, so it's just
Change.
Yeah.
Little, little, a mind game. We have to, when I first looked at it, I didn't understand quite, and then I went back through and it's like, okay, I see what, what you're trying to do, and, you know, it made sense to me and stuff, and.
And there is a trend nationwide with hotels being converted primarily because of what's happened during COVID, and business travel is
Yeah.
definitely subsid-, subsided over the years.
Yeah, well, and I think too, um, I would think the older hotels are probably having a harder time than the new fancy stuff.
Yeah.
And then as we've built and moved freeway systems and stuff, some of them are really struggling, so.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you again. Sorry again for being late.
You were right on time. We just called you.
You didn't even have time to catch your breath.
We'd like to open this up to the public at this time.
I make a motion to open the public comments.
I'll second that motion.
Uh, seeing no public comments, I move that we close the public hearing.
I second.
Move and second and roll call.
Chair Snow.
Yes.
Vice Chair Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Tippett.
Yes.
Commissioner Lucky.
Yes.
Commissioner Benson.
Yes.
Commissioner Erickson.
Yes.
Motion's passed.
Garrett? I got a question for you. Could this be
Six or seven.
approved or recommended to council with a development agreement?
Uh, so that is something that the uh city council could require.
So we could recommend.
You wanna make the recommendation.
We could recommend it then.
I, I mean, it's your motion, so, and it is a legislative motion, meaning the, the city council seeking your input on whether or not to follow through with this.
And to be clear, it's still gonna have to go through a conditional use
Correct.
review by this board as well. So this is more based on zoning and not necessarily what's on the property.
That's, that's correct. I mean,
Yeah.
just to, to be clear though, a conditional use is essentially an approved use with heightened level of conditions, so even if it comes back and it's not a use that you like, but it's permitted.
We've already approved it.
You're required to approve it.
Gotcha. If the conditions are met.
If the condition are met.
Right.
And then do we have a square foot minimum in the zoning they want? Like to be units?
Like a living unit? I don't believe so, no. I can double-check, but I don't believe
They could live in a shoebox and be fine.
Yeah, cause studio apartments are allowed in the TO-DO overlay, so I don't believe there's a minimum.
Anybody else got anything?
No, I, I'm prepared to go ahead and make a motion. Um, Chairman Snow, I move that we recommend approval of the zone map amendment located at two eighty and two eighty-two west, seventy-two hundred south, from the clean industrial zone to the transit-oriented development overlay zone, consistent with the findings noted in the staff report.
Second.
So um, you can ask for that to be considered, but you can't just add that to the motion, but you can open it up for discussion on the motion.
Okay. Do you guys feel that we need a development agreement?
I don't at this time, no. I think, I think, given where it's located, that this is, this is the right thing to do. I would much rather see some kind of housing there than I would industrial, and so Absolutely. so I, I'm very comfortable with, with, with changing the zoning.
I think it meets the goals of the master plan for that area and what we've discussed. Um, I guess my only uh, which has nothing to do with this, my only concern is, is I would like to see it as a senior
That's
apartment development.
That's where I was, that's where I was going with this.
Okay, rather than a.
I definitely approve of the rezoning. Um, my concern is with the age of the building and repurposing it to a point where it's not going to be a standard in the community for very long. Like, it's going to need to be revamped and redone and be redeveloped. While we rezone it, that's great, um, cause I agree with the use. Great.
Right, right.
Um, but I'm concerned about the, using the um existing infrastructure. That's my concern.
I agree.
So I feel like we might be a bit tied if we do the rezone into, based off what legal says, um. being tied into it because it meets all the criteria. Which is okay, I mean, it, it can be used. I just think we, we could aim for something a bit more modern or more flexible and not necessarily studio apartments.
I think that's where the development agreement would kind of help us out.
Right.
When it came back to us.
Well, and does it open up a can of worms for things that we, because we've done that before and then we're like, oh, great.
Well, if we put a development agreement in there, then...
So the way we do it is to...
Council would kind of have to approve what goes in there.
The, the development agreement, my understanding would be more of tying it to the use. But to your point, Commissioner, if the zone is changed to that TOD overlay, it does open the door for a lot more, I guess, as, you know, moderner, if you will, types of uses to come in if this were to be demolished.
Right.
So it does, that doesn't, I don't believe that needs to be tied down with any kind of a development agreement. That's just allowed in the zone and encouraged, so.
But it also leaves it available to repurpose the building.
Yeah.
And I would think the, the bones of the structure, you know, wouldn't facilitate it being remodeled if it was not good bones.
Right, and I don't oppose of the size or any of that sort of thing. It's just, that's why I was asking, the age was, it's as old as I am and I'm breaking down, so I, I have to, I just have to ask the questions.
No, you're good.
And, and this is just a reminder, the development agreement, if, if you choose to do a recommendation with a development agreement, it is just again a recommendation. The city council doesn't have to adopt your recommendation. They can choose to move forward with a rezone without the development agreement. They could also choose to deny the rezone altogether.
And, and right now, we have a motion and a second for consideration of a rezone with the wording that's before you. So I would recommend calling on that motion unless the maker of that motion wanted to reconsider. But otherwise, with the motion standing, I think we need to act on that one and move forward, so.
And I would like to move forward, again, I'm not, I think it's the best thing to do for the, for that area is to rezone it. And that's all we're doing tonight, so I'm very comfortable with this motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded.
Okay, Chair Snow?
Want to go, no.
Okay, Vice Chair Anderson?
No.
Commissioner Tippett?
Yes.
Commissioner Lucky?
Yes.
Commissioner Benson?
Yes.
Commissioner Erickson?
No.
We have a tie?
Tie goes to the motion, does not...
I'm altered and I don't know if I really get it, but... Yeah, so in this case, it would be your, it would be the five commissioners.
So that was, yes.
No.
No. It was...
It was a no.
Three to two.
Yeah.
So with, with that, then basically the motion dies. And so, um, do you have a suggestion for either an alternate motion or thoughts with...
I'd like to see an alternate motion with a development agreement of some sort recommended to city council.
So I could make, I could make the motion to approval with the develop, the, the development required.
Development agreement.
Agreement required.
You can't make it required, you don't...
It would be a motion for the council, a motion, a recommendation of approval.
I'm trying to word this right, but it's not happening.
I'll help. A recommendation of, if I'm reading you right, a recommendation of approval for the zone change with the consideration, or with the council's consideration of a development agreement, something along those lines.
You're thinking I'm gonna say that, did you get that?
I'm writing it down right now.
Okay, good.
Council's consideration for a development agreement. Okay. Poor sister in Australia. Okay. All right. I move that we recommend approval of the Zone Map Amendment located at two eighty and two eighty-two west seventy-two hundred south from the Clean Industrial Zone, CI, to the Transit Oriented Development Overlay Zone, TODO, consistent with the findings noted in the staff report, and would recommend council's consideration for a development agreement.
I second it.
It's been moved and seconded, get a roll call.
Okay, Chair Snow?
Yes.
Vice Chair Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tippett?
Yes.
Commissioner Lucky?
Yes.
Commissioner Benson?
Yes.
Commissioner Erickson?
Yes.
The motion passes.
All right. Be recommended to city council.
We appreciate you. Aubrey, on the next vote, Commissioner Benson is serving as an alternate tonight, so we're just gonna ask the other five.
Now we tell you feel.
Yeah.
Sorry, I'm trying to get the item two right. So we're keeping item two, I'm correct?
So item two, yes, that one is still on.
Okay. Item two, amendments to section seventeen point seven point one-one of the Midvale City Municipal Code to modify provisions for neon signs and modify landscaping requirements for parking lots. I believe Wendell is presenting.
Hello again. Hello again. So this is, one could say, mostly a housekeeping item. The first amendment here is trying to address neon signs. Neon signs on a historic Main Street aren't unappropriate. You know, in the fifties, I'm sure there were some, and we know of some. And so this, this amendment tries to open the city code to neon signs without opening it up too wide. If, if you look, the common thread is really the historic connection. Either the sign is on a historic building or it's a historic sign that gets replicated. Or it could be a new sign that is on a historic building. So that's, that's the signage part, and this applies in the Form B is code zone, which is where we are right now, basically. The other portion of this is also a housekeeping item. As we have worked more with the Form B is code, we have discovered that we are getting some applications that use more unusual development methods because the downtown, it's, it's very much, well, it's very different than your business as usual type of development that you would see in a typical suburb where developer comes in, has a meadow to develop, and there aren't very many constraints. If you remember the project that we approved, that's south of the senior center here on this side of the street had a surface parking lot, but it also had a building overhang that covered a portion of the parking lot. And that's what this is trying to address. If you have the building overhang, hang over this, what looks really like a surface parking lot, you don't have to include the landscaping on the portion where you almost have a, a situation like, that's more like a structured parking situation. That's all this is supposed to address.
So how do you plant a tree underneath the roof?
Right.
And then how do you keep anything growing in the shade?
Yeah, that's, that's exactly what this is about. I mean, it is common sense, I would say. So, um, yeah, this is some, what these amendments are about. Do you have any questions?
I do. How do you define historic on Main Street? Is it just any building or how is that quantified?
Um, that's a good question. I, I would say it would be something that we can definitely chase back several decades. I mean, we probably would need to search the municipal code if there's anything more in specific. But it's sure, it's not meant to address buildings that were just, you know, built ten years ago.
Right, and it doesn't necessarily need to be tied back to age, I can understand that as well. Historic has its own baggage with it, so it can be kind of subjective and squishy. I just wondered if there was a way to quantify it.
I think in the Form B, we talked about that if they did a certain amount of remodeling or change to the building, then that would probably get rid of the, and bring it up to non-historical.
Yeah, so the Form B's code has that element. If you look at the applicability, where if you do a certain amount of remodels and you have to bring things up to code, basically.
Sure.
The grandmother.
They might chance losing the right to do this if they went in and did this big nice, yeah.
Yeah, reasons for keeping historic signage.
And this is just for Form, Form B's? Okay.
Yeah, and there, and there are, we've seen pictures of, you know, Main Street, you know, back in the day where a number of the buildings did have neon signage. And so this would allow like replications of those signs if somebody wanted to bring one of those back. This would open that up and, and we're in support of that, we feel that would be a good addition.
Yeah, I think with the mural and how that all went down, I think this is fantastic. I just was curious about wording.
And I know, like, as far as the state is concerned, I believe, and it might even be a national standard, I believe historic is anything over fifty years, which I realize now that puts us into the early seventies, so.
Wow.
You don't pat anyone on the back.
That hurts. Well, I only say that because sometime, I've been in areas where people don't consider anything past the fifties to be historic. And it's like, well, technically, it is if you look at the age definition, so.
So our, our code does have definitions of both historic and historic building. And so I'll just read the second of the two. Historic building structure, site or object means any building structure, site and/or object that demonstrates historic significance as set forth, and then it references the Main Street Form B's code. But I, I think it, again, the, the previous definition of historic means anything with interest value to the heritage, heritage background or cultural character of Midvale.
I like, I like that one.
Yeah, because that means it could be any age, as long as, like, if they shot a movie.
We're keeping the look on nature.
To keep, hopefully bring back some of the historical nature of the Main Street.
Anybody have any questions? Okay, thank you. Yeah, you'll be welcome.
Chairman Snow, I move that we recommend...
We have to do public call. Is this the combat part?
Yeah, this is a... We have this up, the public hearing.
You can just open it for public comment.
I'd like to open this for public comment, please.
Seeing no public comment, I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, can we get a roll call?
Chair Snow?
Yes.
Vice Chair Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tippett?
Yes.
Commissioner Lucky?
Yes.
Commissioner Erickson?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Okay. Uh, Garrett, you've kind of already, but do you have anything else you'd like to add?
In fact, I think all the remaining things tonight, right, are all legislative. So the next two that we'll talk about are gonna be the same thing, the same standards as the first item. It's a legislative recommendation that you're making to the city council whether or not to adopt these changes.
So do we...
It's, so the motion would be for a recommendation?
Okay, can we get a motion on it?
Chairman Snow, I move that we recommend approval of the request to amend section seventeen point seven point eleven of the Midvale City Municipal Code to modify provisions for neon signs and landscaping requirements for parking lots with the findings noted in the staff report.
I second.
Moved and seconded, can we get a roll call?
Chair Snow?
Yes.
Vice Chair Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tippett?
Yes.
Commissioner Lucky?
Yes.
Commissioner Erickson?
Yes.
The motion passes.
And then do we table three or did we just cancel it?
We can just say three and four will be discussed at a future date.
Items three and four on tonight's meeting will be discussed at a further date and re-noticed. Uh, that takes us to item five, Amendment to the Midvale City General Plan Regarding Moderate Income Housing.
Maggie.
Maggie?
Maggie.
Maggie is presenting.
Hello, Commissioners, my name's Maggie Treeley, pretty new to Midvale City, it's nice to meet you all. Work with the redevelopment agency, I'm the project manager. Um, and...
If I move too fast, I'm afraid it's gonna freeze open.
If it does, you can use my...
This is not it.
It's not sensitive.
Think I'm singing. You're singing, so... Conditional. Thank you. Okay.
There we go.
Um, so what I'm going to be talking about tonight, you may all remember something very similar being discussed in 2019. We made an amendment to the general plan back then adding a Midvale Housing Plan. We also amended the plan to include four strategies and a five-year implementation plan for those moderate income housing as required by the Utah State Code. And here's just a quick review of four of the strategies that were selected back then. We've had to, with the updating of the code, we now have to choose new strategies. And we've made a lot, we made a lot of progress since 2019 with moderate income housing. And we've made some great reports on that progress. And in actuality, in our, in our moderate income housing plan, we had almost all the strategies that the state had listed in the plan. So we were, were working beyond what we, what we were required to do. But now they've updated the code, so we have to select four, uh, four new strategies out of twenty-four housing strategies. Went from twenty-four to twenty-six, or twenty-six to twenty-four, sorry. And because we have a fixed guideway public transit station here in Midvale City, we have to include a station area plan, which means that is the fifth strategy. And we've also are including an additional strategy so that we receive priority to funding through UDOT. So altogether in this amendment, we're, we're recommending six new strategies. And as far as the funding goes through Utah, UDOT, what that means, they're not quite sure yet, but we're gonna go for it anyways and add that extra strategy. And with that is a five-year implementation plan, we're basically starting over. Um and with that is a five-year implementation plan, uh we're basically starting over. Um and then this general plan amendment is due on October first. So what we're adding to the amendment is sort of a phased approach. Um we're including the six strategies um and the implementation plan and the station area plan like I mentioned, and that is all due. On October first, so that's phase one. Um phase two is between now and the end of the fiscal year. We wanna collect more current data. Uh the census has come out since twenty nineteen, and so we wanna have more up-to-date housing and demographic information. So that we can then go back and refine this um implement, five-year implementation plan. Um to really serve those who are eighty percent AMI and below in Midvale um with this new data. And then phase three is really just um beginning on October first through the next five years to just carry out this plan and um update it as needed. And the six strategies that we have selected are listed here. It's a lot to read. But I wanted to throw it up here in case any of you had any questions or wanted to discuss any of them. Um these were carefully selected um through a collaborative effort with the RDA, the Planning Commission. Or sorry, not the Planning Commission, the Planning Department and Community Development. And within the packet that you've all received is the five-year implementation plan. Um and again, that is very flexible and we're looking forward to updating it um by the end of the fiscal year to again. Um meet the needs of of those who are in the city with the new data that we're gonna be gathering with the twenty twenty census.
I just had a question. You you said the change in code, this is the Utah State Code.
Yes.
The state came out and told us what we need to do.
Yes, they revised the code, mhm, yeah.
As they always do.
Yeah, it was fun, it was fun uh working through it to figure out what those revisions were.
And they're not gonna give you money to figure it out.
Um.
And one thing, it says deed restricted units. I think I understand what that is, but could you explain that?
I will try. Um I I'm I'm very new to all of this, um and Nate can jump in if I have some problems. Basically, um if the RDA is supporting a new development um with affordable housing. Um we give them a certain amount of, like, let me take the Main Street um Upper Floor Housing Initiative, for example. We have a program that will support fifty percent of the cost of the affordable housing units. And with that funding comes a deed restriction. It has to stay affordable for a certain amount of time. Um for example, ten to fifteen years, and that is how long the deed restriction would last in order to keep those units affordable for that long. I hope that explained it, okay.
Oh, we do?
Yeah. Thank you.
The word affordable just throws me, cause what's affordable?
Mhm.
Well, unfortunately, we we don't get to set that, um and with the market. There's no way to determine what that is. But I think what we're looking at is housing that could mean affordable housing. Um so smaller units.
Yeah.
Um that can be needed.
And they do have a metric of the eighty percent against something, but that doesn't necessarily mean it would actually be affordable, but they do have a metric in there. So. Yeah.
Yeah, so like, for example, with the deed restrictions, we would only put, we would, we would actually say affordable housing, which is defined as eighty percent of the. AMI, the area of medium income, that would qualify as affordable, so it wouldn't. If somebody was building something or doing something with that deed restriction uh on Main Street where we're providing money. We would say that this unit has to be set at a price of eighty percent AMI or less, and we actually negotiate that. So it could be sixty percent or less, or sixty percent AMI. With a deed restriction of fifteen years and then therefore we're providing the money. So in certain situations here, we would very definitely be. Um defining what affordable, what an affordable house is. Now that. What the moderate income housing is a little less defined, but there, like with the deed restriction, it's for affordable housing units. That would be very specific. Um so it's not what the developer thinks is affordable in this market, it's what the HUD, what HUD has defined as affordable in this market.
I have a question. If if we're contributing our tax dollars to create an affordable. Housing project, what control do we have to make sure that that stays a viable, vibrant property?
Uh the deed restriction, I mean, you can put, we we have some control on the deed restriction. Um even in how it's maintained.
Okay.
To some extent, to some extent. Um we're not the owners, but we do have that deed restriction.
But if the owners don't, they become slum lords, then.
Yeah.
There's gonna be a financial penalty for them.
It depends on the deed. I mean, there's some some amount of restrictions that we could put into the deed. Um it it's somewhat limited, but yeah, you can.
But we have some.
There's still oversight.
Yeah.
And again, um with a lot of these programs, not all of them, some of them are just zoning changes. But some of them are actual programs like the deed restriction. Um those are primarily funded through the RDAs, so that's, that is, it's always tax dollars. So to say that it's not funded with tax dollars is, it it's always funded with tax dollars. But within those RDAs, there's an agreement with um with all of the taxing entities to provide additional funding into those RDAs. And so it's school district funding, county funding that have all been agreed that stay within that RDA. Within the RDA code, the state has said that twenty percent of that new tax increment has to go towards affordable housing. So um with everything that we've generated in the Bingham Junction, everything that we're generating within the Main Street as that starts to. Generate tax increment, the Zion's Building that was just built, that is generating tax increment, eighty percent of that tax increment. Or sorry, twenty percent of that tax increment has to go towards affordable housing. So programs like this, it's perfect with the RDA funding to fund those. Uh one of the great things about. Uh affordable housing funding within RDAs is the state has said. Everything that, all tax increment has to stay within the RDA, with the exception of affordable housing, that could go anywhere within the city. So that actually opens up the RDA to help pay for some of these programming where usually the RDA wouldn't be able to do that. So it's a perfect example with Main Street where we have some blight and some things that we wanna do on Main Street. We want more density. We want the FormBase code to work. We're actually able to take funding from Bingham Junction and infuse that into Main Street. So it it's really working in a pretty um in a very good way where we're kind of. Hitting several of our objectives, uh objectives all at the same time. Where we're revitalizing Main Street, we're putting in affordable housing. And we're getting things like density and helping developers develop stuff that probably wouldn't have gone in otherwise. Um so it's something that I think, I was actually talking with Adam earlier today. Um we have a lot of programs in the RDA that tie hand in hand with. The planning and zoning for the the different areas, especially Main Street. Um and I was just telling uh Adam that it might be something that you're interested to have me and Cody and Maggie. Come and explain all the different programs and the vision that we're kind of having for Main Street and how that ties in with FormBase code. Um not something that you're typically gonna be weighing out in on, but I just think it would be interesting for the Planning Commission to see how all of these different. Pieces work together um to achieve the goals that we have. I mean, it's really. The FormBase code is really working hand in hand with uh all of these programs in the RDA to make the Main Street what I think we all want it to be. And it's, it's pretty cool and it's pretty neat to see it, and it's something that we've never really brought to the Planning Commission. So if that's something you're interested in, um Cody and I and the RDA would love to come and kinda. Explain that off to you someday when you have time.
Yeah, yeah, the requirements for the Upper Floor Housing um initiative, a lot of it is. Making sure people are adhering to the FormBase code, and then we negotiate the affordable um the affordable aspect of the project. And just for a little bit more clarity, moderate income housing is the same as affordable housing. Um the state does state that new uh moderate income housing is eighty percent AMI and below. So it is, it is the same thing. And what that means is eighty percent, um so. The um total cost of housing, that means rent, utility and any other fees. Can't be more than thirty percent of their income, so that's um another way that we gauge affordability.
I do have a question. Um I noticed in the before time, the two thousand nineteen time in the bullet points, um there was mention of ADUs. And so I don't see that here, it may be worded differently, um but that wouldn't be a strategy that we're looking to go forward with, is that what?
I think it's one we've already accomplished, Adam.
What was that, the ADUs?
ADU.
Yeah. And and state law changed uh to where we do need to require those, and so we went through an extensive text amendment about a year ago. Right when I got here that allowed those, and so we allow those citywide in all zones.
So that was like our, so it's our seventh thing, like we we did it.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we've reported on it.
And we, yeah, as Maggie said, we've we've reported on that one, so the state knows.
Yeah.
That was a while ago.
So when we were, when we were choosing these new six strategies, there was quite a few in there that we've already accomplished over the last few years, so it was pretty exciting, but. We couldn't um use those ones once again.
Reallow them.
Yeah.
We, it should have just been a check mark.
Yeah.
That's all good.
Anybody else have any questions?
I don't.
Good job. Thank you.
Nice to meet you.
We get a little sidetracked, but thank you.
No, it's great.
We open the public comment.
Seeing that there's a line out the door, this can take a while.
Oh, I haven't received any comments either.
And seeing no public comment on this matter, I say we close the public hearing.
Second.
Moved and seconded, can we get a roll call?
Chair Snow?
Yes.
Vice Chair Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tippett?
Yes.
Commissioner Lucky?
Yes.
Commissioner Erickson?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Do we recommend this to city?
I'm prepared to make a motion. I move that we recommend approval of the amendment as provided in Exhibit A.
I second it.
Moved and seconded, roll call.
Chair Snow?
Yes.
Vice Chair Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tippett?
Yes.
Commissioner Lucky, sorry.
Yes.
Commissioner Erickson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, we'll forward this to city council.
Staff update. Um I'll have Vendalyn come just uh talk a little bit about some training opportunities and. And whatnot that you can look into and that we would encourage.
Real quick, you were at the training we went to, I went to last week. And you took the same class I did on um conditional use permits.
Yes, we all did. Commissioner Tippett's as well.
I think we need to find a training that we all. Learn about that.
Do you still do it?
I was shocked.
I mean, can we do a workshop for that?
Sure, I'm sure we can. Um we'll. You know, discuss that with Garrett, how to present that best, um sure we can.
I like how he just assigned you that task.
Pardon me?
He just assigned that to you.
Oh, thank you.
No, I just, I I learned something on that that I didn't, I don't know why we have, so. Yeah, I'll discuss it after the meeting.
Maybe you can delegate it to Elizabeth.
Now.
You're over there giggling, yeah.
Well, that's actually, I mean, if you want to know the truth, there is of, I'm sure, already a pre-canned video from the. Property Rights Ombudsman on conditional uses, so.
They're a great source for training.
I recommend everybody watch it. Um, sorry.
That's fine. This is why we are here, to talk about these things. Um I sent an email to all of you um with about half an hour before the meeting with some links. To get us started on um, you know, trying to hone our skills a little bit and. Uh look at different types of training opportunities. And um. I just put in there sort of a random, more or less random selection of what you could be looking at if you want to just. Uh educate yourself a little more about planning in general. Um there's the APA Utah Chapter website, which has, you know, a news section that's sometimes. Uh nice introduction to some topics um about what's sort of going on locally. Um during the legislative session, there is a section on the website about legislative affairs and. Um updates that happen sometimes weekly, sometimes more often. Um that is actually quite helpful, also for us as staff, because it shows us where we need to pay attention and. Then usually things build to a code change um by the legislature that we then as a city need to incorporate. Um there's the American Planning Association, um the national organization that has a website. Um with the planning magazine on it. I don't know if any of you have ever subscribed to it. Um but there is a lot of free content. If you ever discover something that you can't get to. Um Adam or I can probably plug our membership in and get your access. Um another good resource that is more local to us here is the Warsaw Front Regional Council. And um I don't know, you may or may not be familiar with that, the Warsaw Front Regional Council is our Metropolitan Planning. Association, uh which means um the federal transportation money gets funneled to them and then. Through grants, uh divvied up among the cities. Um so whenever you see larger road projects, um it's most likely funded um through WFC. And their grant processes. Also, a lot of active transportation projects, shared use paths. Um bridges, um if you look at um the Jordan River Parkway. The bridges that West Jordan put in were most likely funded to one of their grants. Um another interesting thing for which I sent you the link is the Regional Transportation Plan. That shows you a little bit where the long-range planning is. And um citizens can actually make comments whenever they go through the planning processes um on this website. Then one of my favorites is the National Association of City Transportation Officials. They have um national standards for active transportation, so how to do bike lanes. Buffett bike lanes, um shared use paths and all of that. And this is usually the publication that's most innovative. Um where newer methods are being sort of popularized among the cities. Um then um the Land Use Academy of Utah, this is a website that's maintained by the Property Rights Ombudsman's Office. And this one has a lot of videos um on it, and that's especially. Um it's probably the one of the best resources if you want to learn more about the legal background of planning. What we need to pay attention to, for example, the topic of conditional uses. Um and some of that we already heard from Garrett earlier today. You know, what's the implications of a conditional user. Um and if you look on this website, I found something you would be very interested in. Unfortunately, I didn't have the adapter here to plug in, but one of the videos looks like this. At the planning conference, um, actually oft, many of these, um, videos on this website were actually taken at the planning conference that we attended, and they were just posted here, so. Do you have any questions or suggestions for us?
I know, um, in one of the, one of the sessions that, that Dustin and I attended, it was with the Property Rights Office, and, and the Ombudsman will actually come and and we can make arrangements to have him speak to us in maybe a work session so that we can have a little bit of training together. So that's something that we might want to think about.
Um, yes, um, actually, they do that quite frequently, um, earlier in the year, they had, um, I'm not sure, about six, seven different sites within Salt Lake County and some were in, uh, central and southern Utah. Um, where, you know, anyone could really sign up and, um, go to the training, they would give you a book. Um, and I expect that that will also again happen early next year, so we'll keep tabs on that. Um, so that's one way to get this type of training, and I actually checked that hour right before the meeting. We can basically just contact them and say, "Come and visit us, we will have a work session," and they would train us, would take some pressure off of Garrett, and he doesn't have to worry about that. Um, so there, there are all sorts of ways, if you want to get more training, there's, um, lots of ways that we can accomplish that.
Was that one that you're referring to, is she, she the one that talked about the conditioning?
Yes, and she, and, and her office will come, come and speak to us, so we just have to, we, we just have to talk about what our structure's going to be as far as meetings go, and then, and proceed that way, I think, so.
Uh, and this is also free, so we might as well take advantage of it.
That'd be great.
We had the, uh, State of Ombudsman come one time when we had quite a contentious project, and he kind of set a few things straight, and it was, he was really good, and...
Was this Brent Bateman?
I can't remember, it was too long ago, but, yeah.
Okay. Anything else?
Just wanted to thank everyone for, um, coming to the dinner, um, I think that turned out really well, and, um...
Thanks for putting it on.
Yeah, we look forward to it.
Thank you, Candy.
Yes, thank you for hosting.
Wasn't it the perfect location?
It wasn't bad, you didn't trash anything.
My boyfriend's very jealous.
And it wasn't a hundred and seven that day, it was only ninety-nine. It felt good. I don't have anything to add, so we'll, um, we will, uh, look at our agendas, and when we have a light agenda, we will either do a work session of just training, or, um, you know, if, if it's a lighter agenda, we'll cover the agenda items and then maybe adjourn into a work session or do some sort of training, just so, um, we're already here and we can do that.
How are the next few meetings looking? Do we know yet?
Uh, we're putting the agenda together for the next meeting, um, it's pretty similar to what was tonight, so.
Okay.
Anybody want to adjourn the meeting?
I'll, I'll make a motion to adjourn at seven oh seven.
Hmm, great.
Ta-da.
Good job.